We will now call the meeting of Monday, November 21st, 2022, to order here in the council chambers. And this is our city council meeting for the month of the last one in the month of November. So at this time, I'd like to explain the disaster drills. Of course, if we have a tornado, we all go out by the sewer department building area and go down the steps to the basement. And if we have a fire, we go directly out the exit doors, hopefully in an orderly manner. And that is where you're supposed to go and wait until we get clearance of the situation. Since the meetings are being videotaped, it's important that we speak directly into the microphone so everyone that's watching us on YouTube can understand what we're talking about and to see and hear us well. So Jenny, would you like to start with roll call of the aldermen?
Alderman Hazel, Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco, Alderwoman Eris, Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson, Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele, Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wygon.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderwoman Ostoff.
Here.
Mayor Hazel, Duco, Ferguson, oh, Eris and Steele are excused.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot of aldermen with kids that came in from college yesterday, so some of them are having family get togethers tonight. Jenny, could you call for the department heads?
City Treasurer Beerman.
Present.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Matt Iskan.
Here.
Interim Fire Chief Rick Monglan.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitred.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason P. Baumpool.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Assistant Director of IT Ty Buckner.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Cliff Cross.
Present.
Director of Human Resources William Clay.
Present.
Director of Communications and PR Kathy Kaiser. I have just Kathy out.
Thank you so much. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands its name, one nation under God, in the God of peace, justice, and moral.
Tonight, we have no public hearing, but we may have public participation, which is two to three minutes. Do we have anyone here who wants to participate in public participation? Mrs. Gibson, Mary Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam President. I am Mary Gibson, the U.S. Small Business Administration and the Office of Disaster Assistance, here to say to Mr. Councilman and the public that we are here in the County of St. Clair to assist those individuals who were impacted by the flood in July. We make loans, but we not only make loans to businesses, we make loans in time of a disaster to businesses, homeowners, and renters and nonprofit organizations. My appeal tonight is to say to those who have already registered with FEMA to, thank you, to complete the recovery process by following the letter that they got from SBA if it was referred to, if they were referred to SBA. And if you have not registered, we're encouraging you to register. But the process continues if you complete the application. And if SBA is unable to make you the loan, then SBA will refer you back to FEMA for other need assistance. However, if SBA is able to make the loan, the loan is made at a low interest rate for a long period of time. And the first $25,000 for homeowners and renters and businesses for the physical damage is $25,000 without collateral. For business and economic injury and physical damage in St. Clair County, you can get up to 25 for physical damage and up to 25 for economic injury without collateral. So we're encouraging everyone to complete the process so that you can keep the doors open so that you may get consideration for all the assistance that may be available for you, even if SBA is unable to make your loan. If SBA is able to make your loan, then you will complete the process by receiving the funds from SBA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we actually have a proclamation for you.
So I'll come down here.
See, a proclamation.
So Mary, if you'd like to come forward with Dr. Leroy Frazier. We know that you do wonderful things such as your loan program, but we also know that the Small Business Administration is well-known across the United States and does many, many things for people. So I would like to read the proclamation. If you'd like to come and stand on each side. Whereas the city of Belleville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small business represents 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturdays. 70% report of the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small and locally with independent home retailers. 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they died or ordered takeout from a small restaurant bar or cafe on Small Business Saturdays in 2021. And whereas, the city of Belleville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the city of Belleville, to hereby proclaim November 26th, 2022 as Small Business Saturday in Belleville, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses in merchants on Small Business Saturday and also throughout the whole year. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the carpet seal of the city of Belleville to be in place the 14th day of November in the year of our Lord 2022. Patty Gregory. And I want to thank you again, not only for all that you do year-round for small business in this country and all of your employees and cohorts that work with you. And we also want to thank you for the loan program. It's very important, especially after coming out of the pandemic and then having a flood and everything else. So we're so appreciative of you, Mary and Anthony.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
And also, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and this is for you.
Thank you.
And for you and your office.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now, oh, that's right. Anyone else for public participation? I think we have a couple more. Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Marcel. I live at 224 Lake Forest Drive, and I have been on the Parks Board for between 15 and 20 years. I'm not really sure exactly how long. But I am here tonight, first of all, to invite everyone to please come to a Parks Board meeting. We would love to have you to see everything that we do for the city and also to ask about trying to look into a new community center. I don't know if you're familiar with the Nichols Center, which is where most of our programs are housed right now. But it is a 100-year-old building, and it flooded over the summer, and then there was a fire in it on Halloween and a sewer leak just recently, I think maybe last Thursday. It needs a lot of work, but our community needs to have something for people to go to. We would love to have your help in that, so please come to a Parks Board meeting. We would love to discuss it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. And I just have to say, our Parks and Recreation Department, they are fabulous, and they do wonderful things for families and children in our community. Yesterday, we just had the gingerbread awards ceremony, and it was just great to see all those little kids there with their shining faces, especially when they won an award. So we're very grateful for what the Parks Board does and also what the employees of the Parks and Rec Department do. So that is one thing that we do need and would like to spruce up some areas with that. So I would love if any of the aldermen would want to go with me to the next Parks Board meeting. I certainly would appreciate your company. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Hi. My name is Vernon Harton, 229 South Pennsylvania. This is going to expound on what March just laid out for you. I've been serving on the Parks and Rec Board now for a little over a year. It's my first year as a Parks and Board member, and I've been introduced and seen firsthand the level of passion, professionalism, and drive to improve that the city's very committed Parks and Recreation and their maintenance teams bring to the positions of employment, as you just said, Mayor. In particular, I'm continually blown away every month at the levels of activities, sports, programs, running events, 5Ks, walking, biking events, you name it, that the city's Recreation Department staff runs and oversees. I applaud the city for such a large depth of recreation programs, and again, I think it speaks volumes to the overall department, the staff, and the city as a whole. The only thing I have found to be more eye-opening than the talents and passions of the city's Recreation Department and their depths of services is the lack, excuse me, the lack of infrastructure and building conditions to support such services. The Nichols Community Center, which is the only recreational facility in town, is sorely deficient in many areas and is a facility that I feel has served its useful lifespan and then some. A city as large and forward-thinking as Belleville is does best when it invests in its own and in its future. Facilities as outdated and past its use would not have any rightful place in housing our city's proud first responders, for example, and I applaud this and past councils for having the foresight to make these investments when appropriate. We sit here tonight, in fact, meeting and discussing in a much-needed and upgraded city hall. Improvements to accessibility, security, and other functionalities were needed to a very outdated governmental building, and again, the city recognized and addressed this need when required. So I would like to ask that the same consideration be given to the spirit of the community. The recreation facilities of this town are the places for the citizens, and improving them would be a strong vote of investment for the citizens, our youth, and the future. I ask only for the invitation to those interested to see the current conditions firsthand. The Band-Aid fixes, failing envelope, and building systems well beyond the recommended lifespan will be strongly apparent. Obvious will be the lack of appropriate recreational square footages. Most concerning, however, might be the issues of accessibility and life safety. We come here tonight not asking for a solution or a quick fix to the problem, only the first steps forward to even identifying the problem. This is not an insurmountable problem. Assembling a department and staff with the passions and drive that they have is the hard part that's already in place. Now we just need matching facilities worthy. Please invest your time for this department, invest your time for the citizens, and please invest your time for the city's future. Assuredly, a replacement recreational facility will be needed. It is not if, but when, and we are hoping to only put forth a proactive solution, not a reactive one. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, anyone else for public participation?
I won't be quiet and dead as my fellow member, but I'm Mike Heisler, 2114 East D Street. I'm here tonight with other members of the Belleville Parks and Recreation Board to initiate discussion, as was stated before, for a new community center replaced the existing Nichols Center. The Nichols Center has served as Belleville's community center since 1979. The facility previously served as Bunsen School from 1929 to 1978. The 93-year-old two-story building has been used for many of Parks and Recreation's indoor programs, such as basketball, exercise programs. But like many other, like many older structures, it is showing its age. Maintenance issues such as roof, air conditioning, sewer, and gas have cropped up. Restrooms are old and need to be updated. Even a bigger issue is the facility is not ADA compliant. The city comprehensive plan found that the Nichols Center is inadequate for a city of Belleville's size. To the council, and I'd like to state it by my other members, if you would like to tour the Nichols Center, even if you've already seen it, the staff would definitely be more than happy to take you through the center. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mike. And you brought it up at a very good time because we are doing a new comprehensive plan through our Economic Development Department. So that is something that, as citizens, you can bring up also when we do the master planning for the community. So thank you all for being here. Anyone else? Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Do you need me to get up there, or can I go from here?
Oh, yeah, whichever you would prefer.
All right. I would like to, you know, just take a little time here to, I don't know if everybody was aware of the fire that occurred at my daughter's house on that 421 Lebanon on the morning of the 12th. Anyway, the engine companies, I think 1 and 2 Battalion 4 responded to that fire and successfully rescued my daughter out of a window. I mean, she was unconscious, and she had to be resuscitated. She has second and third-degree burns, and I just wanted to take this time to thank those officers or thank interim chief Wangland, thank Battalion 4 for quick response, quick and professional response, and I feel that it saved the life of my daughter, you know. Also, I'd like to thank Sergeant Ray, you know, Police Department of Gas, that, you know, that were out there. One of the police officers actually passed by there and spotted smoke and turned around, got out of his vehicle, and searched and found the fire. That's amazing. I find that to be amazing, you know, as an ex-firefighter, and I know what can happen in those precious moments, you know. So just want to thank those guys again, you know, for what they did out there. It's, you know, what do you say, you know? But she's thankful, and she says she wanted to go around to the fires. I say, well, you know, take your time. So she's at home, you know, they had to take over the mercy and get that soot and stuff out of her. So she's still coughing a little bit, but she's going to live and, you know, give her tell us story again. Yeah, so thank you. Thank you, guys.
And Mr. Anthony, we have been keeping your daughter in our thoughts and prayers and you and your wife. And I also want to say that our police and fire departments here cannot be beat. So we're very excited and happy to have the first responders here in Belleville that really know what they're doing. So I thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, any more participation? Hearing none. Excuse me. Thank you. I need a motion to appoint Jason Brownlee to fill a vacancy on Human Relations Commission and to serve the remainder of a term expiring on May 17th, 2024. Do I have a motion and second?
Elmore.
Elmore, any discussion? Is Mr. Brownlee here tonight? Okay. Hearing no discussion, roll call? Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. And now I need a motion to approve the appointment of Lloyd Stinson as Fire Chief effective November 22nd, 2022 at 12:01 a.m., pursuant to 10-2-1-4 of the Illinois Municipal Code 65ILCS 5/10-21-4 and Section 33.04 of the city's revised Code of Ordinances and findings that such position requires technical training or knowledge as set forth in the applicable job description within the meaning of Section 31.031A of the city's revised Code of Ordinances. Do I have a motion?
Elmore.
A second?
Dittelman.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I find it amazing that we just, you just said that what a fantastic fire department we have and police department that we have here in the city of Belleville. I've read the gentleman's resume, and I'm very impressed. You know, it's something that you don't regularly see in, you know, in the fire service with someone with this much, I'm gonna call it bling, on his resume. What I have a situation with is here is that, you know, I don't see any municipal fire service experience of this gentleman, and, you know, not taking anything away from him, municipal firefighting, which I've never, I've never done, air force, air-based firefighting. I know that in residential, commercial, high-rises and the like, it's specialized-type firefighting. And, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bring a forest firefighter to Belleville to lead a group of firefighters here. We've, just in my experience, you know, being here, the years that I've been here, been through a great number of chiefs, we've got one of the best fire departments in the state of Illinois. We enjoy ISO rating of a two, which is pretty much unattainable by most departments in this state. And I know that you guys had made up your mind pretty much on this candidate. I've also made up my mind.
Alderman Anthony, why don't we go into executive session?
Beg your pardon?
Why don't we go into executive session?
Okay.
And talk specifically.
Okay.
About the candidate.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Seven.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, for item 70, Alderman Elmore made the motion. Alderman Dittelman, second. Okay, any more discussion? I believe hearing none. Would you like to call for the vote? Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay. Now, we will need approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve city council and executive session minutes of November 7th, 2022.
Okay.
Randall.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $4,220,740.10. Payroll in the amount of $936,499.59. Second? Schaefer? Hearing none, roll call? Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay. Now, we will need approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve city council and executive session minutes of November 7th, 2022.
Okay.
Randall.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $4,220,740.10. Payroll in the amount of $936,499.59. Second? Schaefer? Discussion. Hearing none, roll call?
Nope, they can do a, all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Dittelman, motion from Master Sewer.
I'd like to make a motion from Master Sewer Department, motion to approve 11B1. It's approve a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly of St. Louis to upgrade our alum chemical feed systems at both treatment plants, not to exceed $69,910.
Any second?
Sir.
Dennis?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
My sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like Randy to come up and explain it.
Okay. Thank you.
What this contract is, is we're going to be needing to upgrade our alum feed system at the two plants down at 450 Environmental Drive. Currently, we can only accept it by
Okay, so no reports. So we will start with oral reports from standing committees, special committees, or any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Motion from traffic, Mr. Elmore.
Yes, I'll go through with the pledge of objection.
Please.
Motion A11A1, motion for no parking east of Aprilport for 70 feet on the south side of Gettysburg. Motion 11A2, motion for a three-way stop sign that counts the parkway and line valid intersection. 11A3, motion to create a school speed zone at MC School Center for Westchester Drive from South 74th Street to Sheffield Drive. Those are our motions.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Schaefer.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call? Oh, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Dittelman, motion from Master Sewer.
I'd like to make a motion from Master Sewer Department. A motion to approve 11B1. It's approve a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly of St. Louis to upgrade our alum chemical feed systems at both treatment plants not to exceed $69,910.
Any second?
Second.
Dennis?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I'd like Randy to come up and explain it.
Okay. Thank you.
What this contract is, is we're mainly needing to upgrade our alum feed system at two plants down at 450 Environmental Drive. Currently, we can only accept about 3,000, 3,500 gallons.
Randy, move over to the microphone, bud.
3,500 gallons at a time. We're paying sharp loads and the transportation fee and fuel extra charges is getting astronomical. Pardon me. We looked at upgrading this since 2016 and tabled it. Well, the EPA, federal and state, has now come up and said by 2024 you need to increase the alum feed to get your phosphorus discharge from currently 1 milligram per liter down to .5. We're averaging 300 to 400 gallons per day feed, which entails us having to have sometimes two and three loads a week shipped to us because of not being able to accept larger volumes. And we're paying sharp, sharp load charges every time we deliver. So Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly is going to come in, review what we currently have. They're going to make recommendation and then they're going to draw up plans, specs, apply for upgrading our permit to, in order to enlarge it, take the specifications and the plans and everything else out to bid and bring it back to us ready to award to a selected contractor to do this type of work. We anticipate, you know, with it all said and done, currently we're running about $5,100 a year we could possibly save if we increased it at the day's feed rates. So that will probably double once we have to start putting in and getting that .5. So we're hoping around $10,000 a year savings by able to accept larger loads. Plus, we'll be able to go out and bid it on an open market. We're now limited to only one and two suppliers delivering a sharp load.
Okay. Any more discussion or questions for Mr. Smith? Okay. Hearing none, roll call. Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, motion from Board of Fire and Police Commissioner. A motion to approve the lateral hiring of probationary police officer Jeray Weatherby effective tomorrow, Tuesday, November 22, 2022 at 12:01 a.m.
Whitaker?
Wygon.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. And this will be our 16th police officer that has been hired.
And I believe, doesn't this bring us to the maximum number or not? Yes?
Okay. So unless we get a grant that we're hoping for. Okay, so now from Mr. Whitaker, motions for finance.
Any objections in this group?
No.
11D1, motion to approve workman's compensation, property liability insurance renewal with ICRMT as recommended by our broker. 11D2, motion to waive the formal bidding procedures and utilize the Sourcewell contract to purchase a new 2023 Freightliner M2 with a new sidewinder, 31CU yard, automated side loader body for $290,200. And 11D3, a motion to waive the formal bidding procedures and utilize the Sourcewell contract to purchase a new 2023 Ford F-550 with a Viking size Midwest dump body, salt spreader, and snowplow in the amount of $118,717. So moved.
Thank you. Any second?
Schaefer.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, roll call. Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. Motion from Police and Fire Committee, Alderman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Police and Fire Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2000 E1 custom popper that is currently on lease from Banner Fire Equipment in the amount of $30,000. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. A motion from the library boards, since Alderman Duco is absent, I will be reading the motion. This is motion to approve an easement with IDOT for ADA sidewalk improvements at 121 East Washington Street.
Can we read them together? Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, and also a motion to approve a contract for the installation of a solar array at 121 East Washington Street.
Randall, so moved.
Second?
Schaefer.
Okay, discussion.
A question, Mayor.
Yes.
We mentioned a solar array. Are these, is this the same type installation that they're putting down in East St. Louis? And in Washington Park?
Okay, would you like to answer that, Leander? Thank you.
It's similar. It's similar to what they did with the school-to-school districts, the school buildings. This is solar array that will be on the roof that will offset our electrical costs.
Okay.
This will be no cost to us. This is being purchased by a third party further and we will purchase the electricity at discounted rate from this third party and they will receive all of the tax benefits since we cannot be in the municipal.
Thank you, Leander. I was, what I was thinking was the big fields that they're developing, so thank you.
Yeah, this will be on the roof.
Thank you.
So it really will not be anything with our Carnegie Library that's going to show, you know, to the general public.
Right.
So.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay, motions from the Planning Commission?
We need to do a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do a roll call. Guess I was gonna let that one go by. Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. Motions from Planning Committee, Mr. Dittelman?
On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion. Can I read both of these together?
Yes.
On 11G1, club car wash development. Site plan approval for the construction of approximately 5,394 square foot club car wash with 20 associated vacuum stalls on an approximately 60,775 square foot lot with a C4 commercial district. 2,500 Greenmount Commons Drive, parcel number 09-19-102-001, Ward 7. Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of seven to nothing.
Okay.
You're gonna do the next one? You wanna read the next one too?
Oh, I do wanna read that one. 11G2, ImmunoTech Bio Centers. Site plan approval for the construction of approximately 9,000 square foot Plasma Donor Center. It's a medical office building with 56 parking spaces on approximately 103,237 square foot lot within a C2 heavy commercial district at 5510 North Belt West, parcel number 08-18-100-031, Ward 8. The Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of seven to nothing.
Okay. I need a second?
Schaefer.
Okay, now discussion, please. Any discussion or questions? Okay. I would like to tell you that with the bio center, it will be bringing in 40 new jobs that will be medical lab and doctors and technicians. And the club car wash, I think Cliff, are you still here?
I'm here.
You wanna tell what has happened with the club car wash?
Well, if you recall, out at Belleville Crossing, we originally had two car washes that were proposed to come in out there. Club car wash, in a sense, is a tidal wave car wash. So they are proposing to place this one out at Greenmount Commons in the place of the current PNC building. So we're gonna have one on each end of town is what we're gonna have here. I think the concern that came up, and I don't know the definite answer to this, but out at Belleville Crossing, the concern was the close proximity of two car washes within that development. My guess would be the tidal wave is not going out there now and replacing it with this club car wash because that's the new developer of the tidal wave car washes. I think Shiloh is a classic example where you can see that that now has become a club car wash in the place of that original tidal wave car wash that was there. So not saying they both won't go out there at Belleville Crossing, but I would suspect these are gonna be our two car washes throughout the city, one on each end of town.
Okay.
I have a question for a quick. 5510 North Belt West is the Plasma Center?
Yes. It's right next to the drive-in theater.
So the building, the building between the car wash and Shenanigans?
Yes, and it's actually part of the existing drive-in theater. They did a lot reconfiguration to accommodate this. This is really, in a sense, going over the existing parking lot there that's kind of off the lot next to the drive-in theater and the bar. I think one of the important things that did come out of the Plan Commission, and this is sometimes what's nice about having the site plan review and the site plan control, which is the purpose of it. I think one of the most positive things that come out of it is my understanding there's some significant runoff issues that go out on North Belt West. By a new development coming in there now, we have the opportunity to have some stormwater runoff control to prevent some flooding out in North Belt West, which I think Sal and Randy and everybody might be worried about. So that's a positive from it, that we're gonna have some ability to have some extra impervious surface control and stormwater runoff at the time this thing is developed. So I think that's a plus there as well with this development.
And the 40 jobs will be higher-paying jobs also. Okay, any more discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. No communications this evening, no petitions. Resolution, I need a motion to read by title only, resolution 3461.
Randall, so moved.
Schaefer, second. Okay, thank you. This is a resolution for warranty deed and temporary constru-
Do you need a call first?
Oh, I gotta call first, whether we can read it this way that we just said. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Jenny, wanna read the resolution?
14A, resolution 3461, resolution for warranty deed and temporary construction easement, 121 East Washington Street, Belleville, Illinois.
Schaefer, so moved.
Randall, second.
Roll call?
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion? Boy, I'm glad you're here with me tonight. Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. Under ordinances, I need a motion to read by title only, ordinances 9098, 9099, and 9100.
So moved, as a group.
Okay. Any discussion?
Did you say you were the second?
I'll be the second to run.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Jenny?
15A, ordinance 9098, 2022, and ordinance amending Article 7 Traffic Code, Chapter 76. Parking schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville, Illinois amended by many portions of sections thereof. 15B, ordinance 9099, 2022, and ordinance amending Article 7 Traffic Code, Chapter 75. Traffic schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville, Illinois amended by many portions of sections thereof. 15C, ordinance 9100, 2022, and ordinance amending Article 7 Traffic Code, Chapter 75. Traffic schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville, Illinois as amended by many portions of sections thereof.
Okay.
Schaefer, make a motion.
Randall, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business. Is there any miscellaneous or new business? I do need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of $8,614.67.
Elmore?
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian? Dittle, sorry, Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. And there, having already had the executive session, I believe the next point of order is motion to adjourn.
Randall, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. I wanna wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.